One, one minute.
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which expands, one nation, and a God. With all the glory of the Lord.
Help us plan a healthy economic future for this community. Let the right actions be taken so that prosperity can be regained. Help our unemployed so they can find the proper niche in life. Bring about world peace. Amen.
Amen.
No, what I was gonna do is tomorrow after I get the votes on it, which, then I would probably do one of these for the seat line. I'll give it to the panel. Do you want me to do this?
Sure.
Before we start our agenda tonight, we have the Roberts family here tonight, and we have a certificate of appreciation for the family. I'm gonna read it to you. The Roberts family, Stuart, Mary, Vivian, and Luke, in recognition of exceptional community spirit, in taking the initiative to clean CB Abbott Park after a recent attack of vandalism for no other purpose but the welfare of others in the betterment of the city of Fulton. Fulton takes great pride in this family and their loyalty to the community, and would like to say thank you for your efforts. If you would like to come up front, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the mayor. And by the way, the mayor tonight couldn't be here because he is meeting with the Lions Group and a swig with the Industrial Development Agency, and they are the ones that are looking to help occupy the nuthersy plant. Alderman Cavallaro, you brought this to our, if you'd like to come up.
Watch him. Yeah.
Careful, courts. We went on the little.
Yeah, don't know. Just kidding, just kidding, right? Okay.
And you weren't involved in this? Thank you very much.
Very, very good of you.
The city is proud of you.
And...
Here's your giving of appreciation.
(applause).
Here we go.
Move your shoe nice like that. Smile.
Ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Good.
Thank you very much.
Second, second.
How is she? First item.
Can you do that? Please.
Thank you.
Are you gonna? You're pregnant. Sleepy. Yeah.
First item on our agenda tonight is a resolution of respect for Robert C. Burley and some of Bob's families here tonight. I'd like to say before we go too much farther, I know Bob Burley well. I served for a while with him. Robert was a dedicated alderman. He was also the council president for a number of years, and anybody that's been here knows what you, especially the family, what a person puts in when they're an alderman and especially a council president. And he certainly will be missed, and he'll be missed by me, and I know a lot of the other council people, and I know he served under several mayors. So now, I'd like to read this, and then I would like to ask the council to offer the resolution. Whereas Robert C. Burley passed from this life on Monday, September 1st, 2003, at his home, and whereas Robert C. Burley was a graduate of Fulton High School and Rochester Business Institute, and whereas he was a Navy veteran of World War II and retired from Niagara Lake in Fulton after 35 years as a technician, and whereas Robert C. Burley was a former alderman of the old third ward from 1963 to '81, and was the president of the Fulton Common Council, and whereas he was a member of the BPOE #830 Elks Club and president of Mount Adnan Cemetery Association built in Fulton, and whereas he was an avid golfer, hunter, and enjoyed the outdoors, and whereas Robert C. Burley was instrumental in the creation of the ice rink at the Fulton Community Center, North Bay Campgrounds, and worked actively in a committee to build tollpath towers, Indiana State Bridge, and whereas Robert C. Burley was predeceased by his sister Helen Bernard, who passed away in 1892 after 14 years of dedicated service to the city of Fulton, and whereas Robert C. Burley is survived by his wife of 55 years, the former neighbor E. Todd, to her daughters, Deborah E. Jackson of Pittsburgh, Nancy R. Weschel of Fulton, his son Robert M. Burley of Fulton, six grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and several nieces and nephews, and whereas the mayor, members of the common council, all city employees and all that knew him will sorely miss this man whose dedication to this city, his family, and friends will forever be remembered. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, members of the common council, show a great sense of loss for the family and friends, and due with deepest regret, take official notice of the loss of this very special man, and be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of October 7th, 2003, and copies of it transmitted to the immediate family of the late Robert C. Burley. May I have a motion to approve this?
All right.
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Joe will make sure you all get copies and transcripts of this. Thank you for loaning him to us for all these years. Second item on the agenda is approved the minutes at common council meetings, September 23rd, 2003, and September 30th, 2003.
We'll move it.
Second.
Clerk praise Carla Roll.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Woodward?
Yes. I guess we shouldn't have done that. Item number three, award state bid. I was still thinking about you.
Are you on a practice, Mayor?
Yeah.
Well...
A little bit.
Award state bid saw 2003, 2004 winter season. May I have an offer, please?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number four, failure to comply to 60 West 4th Street, Dwayne Property. Have a motion on this?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, public hearing, right-of-way issue, install property at 255 and 259 South 6th Street.
Whereas a city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing for this meeting of October 7th relative to a right-of-way proposal submitted by Mr. William South for the purpose of widening his driveway between 255 South 6 and 259 South 6, both premises being owned by the applicant. Mayor Woodward will now declare the public hearing open.
Public hearing is open. Anyone here to speak on this matter?
I'm speaking for my daughter, Janice Saboda. It's a letter from her because she couldn't become in person. I'm sending this letter with my mother because I couldn't attend the meeting this evening due to a conflict with my coaching tennis at JV Girls. I did have some concerns with the proposed driveway and wanted to make sure that they were addressed. I wasn't sure if the driveway would cover the entire front lawn. If so, I wanted to know about the snow removal in the winter. That part of 6th Street is very narrow, and in the past two winters, the yards was a mound of snow, very high. If it's all parking, where will the snow go? Also, will the sidewalks be covered with cars? I wasn't sure if there was enough room for cars in between the houses and the sidewalk. How many cars will be parked there? In the winter, as I said, the street is very, very narrow. Cars backing straight out of that will virtually take away any parking area I have in front of my house. I also wanted to know how many families would be living in that house. I was told that it had lost its classification as a double occupancy because it had been vacated for several years. There seems to be room in the rear of the house by the garage. Why can't there be used for parking? I thought that there was a moratorium on allowing new accesses. I just wanted to make sure that these questions were addressed. That part of 6th Street also has a lot of grade school children who play along that way area. Thank you, Janice Saboda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on this tonight? Please come up.
Yeah, I own the property on 606 Highland. My question is, is that driveway going to change the grade in the back next to the garage where there's gonna be a drainage problem into my property?
Yeah. Are you familiar with that?
Not especially. I don't know, Mr. Stell?
Mr. Stell is here. I think he can answer most of those questions.
I'm sure I understood that question. What was the problem?
Well, he's wondering if the driveway will affect the drainage where he lives on Highland Street. You might come up to the microphone, please, so we can hear. That was your question, wasn't it?
(inaudible) change the grade alongside the garage.
Okay.
The grade alongside the garage used to drop off two feet. I took the stone wall out, and I had to push the dirt away from the front of the garage to get a cement slab put in there. So you get in the garage, and I put it on that side of the garage that had nothing there. I couldn't get down to mow it even because it was a stone wall. So I don't know if it's gonna affect, I don't see how it's gonna affect drainage to other properties there. My whole property slopes down and back from the street. You know, the street sidewalk or the curbing isn't very high there because it's been paved so many times. It's probably about three inches high max, the curbing itself.
My property drops off that, we talked about, and as long as the grade continues to drain that way, then I don't have a problem with it. But if you build that up to the level of your driveway now, everything's gonna drop right off, and I don't have a wet basement now. I don't want one later.
You understand what he's saying?
Yeah, I believe so. Is that that rental house right there? Okay, I know what you're talking about, yes. There's still a couple of feet, there's still a couple of feet there before we can get there, but I mean, no, it's not gonna grade, it's not gonna grade towards your house.
You're not gonna add any more dirt back than is there now?
Well, they take the, when they do, if I get permission to do this driveway, the dirt coming out of the driveway's gotta go somewhere, and I was gonna put it beside that by.
And that's gonna grade, that's gonna push the water my way, is what I'm gonna say. And we don't want that water in our basement. We have a dry basement.
I know, I understand that, and I wouldn't wanna do that to you either.
So, is there any way we can get this so if something happens where I do get water in my basement, then I'm not gonna be stuck? That's what I'm saying. Otherwise, I do have a problem with that.
Oh.
I've never had water in my backyard that I know of, other than, you know, it's wet or snow or rain. You know, it's only, have you had any problems before?
No. That's what I'm...
I don't try, I'm not trying to create one, I'll tell you that.
How many families do you both live in here?
One family. It's a one-family house.
Oh, that's what, two or three would be, an apartment, you know, four or three families?
No, no, it can't be made that way. And as far as the snow?
So, is she, Mrs. Saboda, right, when she said it reverted back to a one-family?
Pardon?
That is a one-family now, it can be?
It was sold as a one-family house.
Okay.
And I talked to the code enforcement officer today, and he said because it was empty for 12 months, even though it was on the books, on the tax rolls as a double house or a two-family house, it can't stay on there anymore. I had to get a permit to take it back to a single family because it was vacated for 12 months.
I think that answers your question, familiar. Okay.
She has no objections.
Okay. The driveway is still the age, there's no place to park on the street.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure we answered the issue about the runoff, so that's the only thing. I mean, have you, have you looked at that, or?
I've been by there, well, I've been by there a million times.
Did the planning commission look at that?
Yeah, yeah, and they approved it.
They approved it.
I don't think they looked at his specific problem, but what I would like to suggest, Stell, is could you work with him, please, so that when you do this project, we can be assured that he's not gonna have that problem?
Is your name Kezza?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
You live behind him.
Well, I don't live there. I own the property. I'm one of...
Maybe before you two meet tonight, if you wanna make contact phone numbers so you can...
That's fine.
Communicate?
That's no problem.
Will the cars be covering the driveway, parking in the front? That's what you're going to do, park in the front, right?
You're talking about when they cover the side?
My driveway is gonna be 70 feet long.
Oh, you're not extending the driveway to make it sort of, you can put cars in the front?
No.
Oh, okay.
The driveway's already there, I'm just widening it.
Oh, that's fine.
Because right now, it's a sunken driveway, and you can't back in it, you can't drive...
Well, twice as they make it larger in the front, then they park four or five cars?
Oh, no, no, no. It's gonna be, from the street out, it's gonna be two cars wide.
That's fine.
All right. Any other problems, questions?
As long as we just, just, I just don't want water, that's all.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanna speak on this subject? Anyone on the council?
Need a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do we have a resolution for it to pass?
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the right-of-way request submitted by Mr. Stell is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, item number six on the agenda, city clerk to advertise public hearing for proposed local law to amend Chapter 61 of Electrical Code Limited License.
Whereas this basically is, we're adding a sentence, which will say, "Upon recommendation of the electrical board, the city shall have the authority to issue a special limited license to a person who is licensed electrician in another municipality in New York State for the sole and exclusive purpose of doing electrical work on a construction project where the monetary consideration for such contracted work is at least $100,000, and provided that said license C pays a fee of $1,000 for the special limited license and electric permit fee."
May I have an offer to move that?
I'd like to, well, we can move it first, but I was gonna ask Attorney Oathorn, is there, are you aware if this is precedent, or do other communities do something similar along these lines?
This is language taken right out of our plumbing code. We have the same thing under plumbing. This is a request that came from the electrical board back in May, and since the only, very few legislative committee meetings we've had, I haven't been able to get this discussed. I didn't really think it was that complicated that we couldn't just put it out for public hearing, because electrical board really wants this. It's a very limited situation. With that, it would apply, and certainly if you have any questions, they would be glad to answer them, but I'm just passing on their request. And again, it mirrors the exact language, it's in the plumbing code. It's in our plumbing code. We have this in our plumbing code.
Anything else, Joe? Need a motion, a second. A motion and a second, please?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number seven, extend bid date for sidewalk replacement, City of Fulton.
Basically, according to Mr. Edict, we had, we had no bids, and so what he did is, is asked to extend the bid on the sidewalks to, from October 6th until October 14th.
Okay.
I got a question. Does anyone on the council know why we're doing this now?
Obviously, we didn't get it done in time to get it done under a...
I mean, there's certainly not gonna be any sidewalk replacements for the next six months or so.
I would imagine if you, if you get bids, there'll probably be what's on our list, they'll work on...
They'll start, they can start now?
They'll start it now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the problem was that the money was part of the bond thing that passed.
Right, yeah, I mean, you had to wait for that to...
And you had to wait for the stopper period after that. Only now is available to be spent.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Item number eight, city clerk to advertise for bids for repair on the final settling basis, number one and two, to search treatment plan.
Basically, we will be accepting bids on Monday, October 20th, up to 2:00 p.m., and we'll open them at 2:15 p.m.
Okay, and something has to be done, and... May I have a motion on this?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item number nine, change November meeting date. I assume that's because of our election. Joe, you wanna read that?
Resolve that the common council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 4th, 2003, be moved to Wednesday, November 5th, 2003, due to Election Day.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 10, city chamberlain authorized to make budget and revenue adjustments. Joe, you wanna explain that and read that?
Yes, whereas the Fulton Fire Department applied for and received a grant from the state of New York in the amount of $10,000 for a community service assistance program to be used for miscellaneous equipment for the Fulton Fire Department. Said equipment is designated to assist the fire department in protecting lives and property, and will also provide for the safety of firefighters and efficiency during operations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city chamberlain increase the A3989 Community Services Revenue Account and increase the Fire Department Point 2015 account by $10,000 each.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number 11, city clerk designated polling places for November 4th, 2003 general election.
Right, the polling places for Tuesday, November 4th election, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. will be War Memorial for Ward 1 and 2, District 1 and 2. Ward 3, District 1 will be Lanigan School. Ward 3, District 2 will be Crossroads Tabernacle. Ward 4, District 1 and 2 will be the Masonic Temple. Ward 5, District 1 will be Tollpath Towers. District 2, Fairgrave School. And Ward 6, District 1 and 2 will be Fulton United Church, First United Church of Fulton, Your Honor.
Okay.
Mayor, these are all handicap accessible?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't do them no more without accessibility. That completes our agenda tonight. We have three discussion items on.
You need to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were just telling us where they were. You have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that completes our agenda, except for discussion items, and there's some on here that we may want to act on. The mayor went through this with me with the Christmas decorations. I didn't anticipate these other two that are on here, so, well, in the dark on. Alderman Cavallaro asked to have this put on, and the mayor told me that we were looking to get quotes on this. Is that correct?
Yeah, we requested that. They're back over the window.
Actually, I pulled it from the budget January, if you remember, because I asked for quotes, but I would like to tell you...
May have been you.
Yeah.
But I just called to inquire as to where we are with that, if we're going to...
I don't think we ever got quotes, but I would like to make a recommendation to the council. I would like the council to pass a resolution tonight asking for quotes for the upcoming budget. We do not have time to get quotes for these now, because we usually try to get these up by Thanksgiving. The merchants usually like them up by then. I suggest that we go through the contract we have for this year, and I think you should do it tonight, but also along with that, I think that you should pass a resolution, not just ask and get quotes. We've never really bid this out, we've gotten quotes, and the reason for that is, and I worked on this committee a couple of different years, along with the merchants, but we never did get them to pay their share again. We usually take what we want.
Just thought you had that.
Well, I mean, they were, yeah, they were here last week, beat me up, so, but anyway, mainly because you have to know specifically what you want, and these are so different. And usually what happens when you go after quotes, you'll get pamphlets and with a whole wide variety of things that the council chooses from, with a whole wide variety of prices. And what we usually do is set a budget figure that we feel we can spend, and then when everyone looks at them, then we decide what we get. So I would, do you, are you prepared to do a resolution to execute that present contract tonight?
Yes, I, we can do one, Your Honor.
I think we should. I think we should do that, and then we won't have the grand share of Christmas season, and then I'd also like to file that with a resolution to try to get quotes before, certainly before we pass a budget this year. I think if we get one, probably by the end of November, we'd be in good shape.
The only thing I would bring up, when I discussed that with Mr. Tietro, he was unsure of how to spec out the quote, and we may need to talk about several alternatives when we ask for the quote. What I mean by that, just for instance, if we've got X amount of lampposts between Oneida Broadway...
Well, we've got a lighting pattern. We know how many we have, and it seems like every year, something...
But do we also want to ask for quotes for lesser than that amount, to make a comparison, what size, what type, and...
Okay. But normally what they do is they'll, I mean, we have a packet in the clerk's office on, on this stuff, or we did have, a thick one, and normally what happens is they'll send books in, and if you buy, if you, if you want at least 50 of them, it's so much per piece, and if you want to do 100, then it changes, and it's done that way. There's a great variety of mix and match when you do it.
So long as Court Tietro feels comfortable when he, if we're gonna do the resolution tonight, that he feels comfortable in knowing what it is he's gonna ask for.
Yeah.
So I'll ask you, Joe, do you feel that that's...
You can only do it for a certain number of polls, you know, I mean, and not to exceed or up to, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm, the only thing that, that I remember that we did a long time ago is that a committee of aldermen went out to the different places, and they had a committee that actually went out and picked out what they wanted and compared prices, and that's how, how they brought a new contract in. So that may be the alternative other than quoting out this year, because in fact, Brandano, who has a contract for this year, said what they would like to see if the city stayed with them, or if you go with somebody else's, sometime in July or something of, of next year, to go to these places, pick out what you all like, and then get quotes on them, and then you can put it, your best, you know, ideas into the budget, and do it that way rather than, than setting up specs and stuff. That's the way, we did that one time.
Yeah.
I remember that.
I'm not sure how you'd spec that. I mean, they plug in...
It'd be very tough.
They plug in a light pole, you know?
I know. What, what we did was, now that you said that, Joe, I believe I recall, we did was we asked, I don't know if it was Brandano, to put up several different varieties.
Right.
And then we had the public give input as to which ones they liked, and those were the ones we, we finally put up.
Then I guess what we need to do is forget that, and just the council decides on what they want to spend on them next year, and you'll do that shortly.
Right, and I...
You've got a figure for this year.
And what I could do is I could get ahold of some different companies in, in July or something, have them put up, you know, some decorations around the city, and get some input from the public and see what they like best.
Okay.
How about that?
Sounds good.
Is that okay?
Okay, now, we got something for the contract we got?
Yeah, just to, to honor the contract, a one-year contract this would be, for Brandano displays an amount of $19,000. That's what we got in the budget.
And do we have a time, a date set down? I know that merchants usually like to get them up before the Thanksgiving season, so let's make sure that that...
Yeah, it's before Thanksgiving, and then they take them down right after New Year's Eve.
Right after New Year's Eve.
Right.
So we got a... We need a motion?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Is there a motion on this?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Second item on the discussion is Empire Federal Credit Union ATM. I heard a little bit about this today when I was down at Code Department after work. They want to put an ATM machine at Bullhead Point.
This has been discussed earlier this year. It kind of got put on hold for a while while they had some problems with DOT as far as right of ways. Also, to remind everybody, I had written letters to all local banks, and no others expressed an interest in putting one there, so we did enter negotiations with Empire Credit Union about putting one there. We've had proposed contract, and I've had some revisions requested. The only real revisions now are where exactly there it's going to go, which they do have a plan, and the dollar figure, which you guys had questioned previously, and we had had some communication about in prior discussions this year. And Mr. Hartman's here from Empire. He can answer any questions you have in there regards.
Is that something you wanted to do tonight, Dave?
Well, it's... You could. I mean, it's something that because of the weather issues...
I think you need to...
Now that they've cleared the DOT hurdles, they'd like to get moving on it.
Okay.
And we do appreciate that. My name is Jim Hartman. I'm the Vice President of Branch Administration for Empire. And I know I've met a number of you folks. You've been up here several times recently with a new building, which we're all proud of. One of our concerns is as we leave the west side of Fulton to move into this larger facility over here on 481, is leaving a full-service ATM over there for the membership on that side of town, as well as a very low fee, or in many cases, no-fee ATM alternative for the rest of the population in the area. I think I've mentioned in the past that Empire fees are about between 26%, 27% of our ATM transactions are fee. The vast majority are not, and that, of course, is reversed in most of the banks. So we see it as a real positive benefit to the community. So, speaking earlier in the year, we looked at Lake Nia Tawana, Bullhead Point. I do have a couple of maps here, and I'd like to... There's one circulating perhaps?
I seen it.
I'm sorry? Well, actually, what we tried to do, and this is where I think Bob Billie, who's in the audience, was very clever in how he placed this, we asked him to look at trying to come up with a way that would minimize the impact on future parking. You only have a scratch code of paving down in there. The goal was to make sure we didn't take out parking spaces, and also to try to make sure that we did very little to direct traffic flow down towards the pavilion. We're concerned about that. Originally, we had hoped to be adjacent to Route 3, which would have worked out much better from a visibility standpoint, as well as a traffic flow, but unfortunately, that's within the state, New York State, right-of-way for the highway.
It's a big right-of-way there.
It's a massive right-of-way, so suddenly we couldn't accomplish that. And I think just the... What you see there is a very good plan that while it may look like it's in the middle now because there's not striping on the paving, I think it's designed to give you a maximum amount of paving... I'm sorry, a maximum amount of parking and a very minimal impact on the traffic flow. Still maintains a pretty good visibility.
Don't you find, I think I see this at your other one, that you don't usually have more than a couple cars there at a time anyway, right?
That's true. Cars tend to move through very quickly. Our ATMs are directly connected to our system, most of the... That's a very rare thing, and they're connected by a 56K telephone line. They're constantly in communications. There's no dial-up time. They're very fast transactions, and because of that, queues move very quickly. We see this actually as a win-win because it's a nice piece for... I think a nice piece for that part of town. Certainly, it's an opportunity for someone to get ahold of some cash conveniently, but it's done in a nice way. You can get in and out, but also should benefit Doms, the restaurant at Bullhead Point, as well as the other businesses out there.
Any questions from the council? Do we settle on a rental fee for this?
Well, the rental fee that had been proposed was $400 per month. I passed it on to you guys, and you'd had some questions. I don't know if any of you have done any of your own research. I believe I've discussed with... Through Mr. Kiesha, who's a broker that does a lot of work with Empire, he indicated to me that that's pretty much the standard rate that Empire uses for all its...
We have paid 400 on several occasions. That's right.
I wasn't... Like I say, I thought that some of you were going to do some of your own research on what others charged.
Do we require insurance or bonding or anything for that being over there? Or is it on the state right-of-way, and we don't need it?
Well, it's not in the state right-of-way. That's... That was part of the problem is it can't be. I believe that... I'm not sure about the insurance issue, but the proposed contract certainly indemnifies us for liability of anything that they... That's a problem that's caused by their facilities being there.
Okay, but I mean, if somebody going to their restaurant over there, which is on the city's property, backs into it or something, we're not going to end up paying for it, are we?
No, they would have insurance for that.
We're going to put high lines or posts or whatever?
We'll put metal bollard posts filled with concrete at each of the four corners, very similar to what we have over here on Mr. Porter's property.
How are they looking to do this?
Well, because of the year-end concerns, I'd like to try to get this thing accomplished by a month end, which is a real fast process.
I just got a quick question. Dave, did you say that you did make this available to the other banking institutions? Yes, I wrote letters to all other banks that have branches in town. Two of them responded to say they weren't interested. The others did not respond.
Okay.
I can say we're quite... Empire is very pleased with the Fulton community, and we look at this as another investment in the community.
Have you got an expected opening date for the new facility?
Yeah, you should... Most of... I think everybody here should be getting invitation very soon, or ribbon cutting, November 17th. Our expectation is to be open towards the end of this month. We haven't really announced it yet. I'll let you in on a secret. The contractors think we want to be done October 24th, but we'd be happy to move in on Halloween weekend. That would be our trick. So don't tell them that, okay? Appreciate it.
Five years, Joe.
Five years.
Mayor, I have no problem with it. I'd like to move it along.
Yeah, well, Joe's going to do a resolution here. Just so the council knows, this contract is a five-year contract. Do you understand that? Y'all understand what they're going to get for the lease per month?
400 bucks.
Okay.
In my understanding, to complete the lease, Bob will give us a description of the ground area being leased according to the map if we're in agreement with this map, so we should make that determination as well tonight.
Will authorize the mayor to sign a five-year contract with Empire Federal Credit Union?
I'm sorry. You have a question?
Is that going to be, you know, places lit up, or do you have to put lights around it, but we don't pay for it?
Yeah.
I'd like to take a look at that as well.
As I think most of you know, New York State ATM Safety and Security Act requires us to maintain a lighting perimeter around all of these locations, one candle power at... I believe it's measured 42 inches off the ground, 50 feet circular around the property. So we tend to light them fairly well. One of the reasons we wanted to do it at Bullhead Point was we thought that would provide an additional security piece for you folks. There's also cammering within the ATM, as well as exterior to the kiosk, that will provide a security camera for your system out there. So hopefully, between the lighting and the cammering and all, we're going to have a more secure environment there.
Barry?
Are you proposing the ATM and the lamp? Only reason is because if you've been down there on a Saturday night, you see the amount of traffic that we have, and there's... Actually, the parking lot can't accommodate with our traffic flow that we have there now. Those are just some of the concerns that I have with industrial traffic down in that area during a concert on a Friday or Saturday night.
We realize that there'd be times when the parking lot would be pretty busy, where that would not be a convenient place for people to pull in to use the ATM. That's why we do have other ones. We're hoping that the majority of the time for the people on the west side, it would be convenient.
Barry, is this the first time you looked at this?
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen it.
The... I'll point out the footprint for the... Thing is in the upper right-hand corner of that drawing, you can see the footage. It amounts to a fairly small amount of actual dedicated space to it.
It's nine feet length?
I don't have it in front of me, and I lose track of what those dimensions are.
Nine feet.
Nine feet, okay. By about just over three feet wide, I believe?
Yep, three foot, eight inches.
And all the... What we do is we bring in all the utilities, of course, underground, and that would include data and security systems. This will be monitored in Syracuse, available to be monitored in Syracuse 24 hours a day, so it does provide a higher level of security for your area.
So how is it lit up now? How's it...
It'll be lit because this one's out in the center. We can't quite light it the same way we lit the one over here, where we had ground-mounted lighting that came up. Instead, what we're going to do is it'll be roof-mounted lighting that maintains a standard of one candle power per square foot at a radius out 50 feet. The reason... You know, again, that's New York State standard. That's twice the average height of candle power lighting of normal parking lot lighting. Normally, it's half at those levels, and this is that one full candle power. So it lights up pretty bright without being... I don't think it tends to be obtrusive, but it doesn't leave any dark corners. We have the same situation. We're putting in same lighting level over here at the new branch.
Before we do any more, I would like to hear from... I'm a little surprised that our Parks and Recreation Director hasn't been involved in this. We need to hear from you before we do any of this.
I know originally, I'm not trying to... I'm not trying to support any kind of project or any potential revenues the city's going to earn on this, but the problem's here is originally we had talked about, and I know you had prop issues with DOT, about being able to put that in a right-of-way would be the most convenient, not as less conspicuous as large traffic. However, if this room were both sight, that seems to be ready to flow the traffic for the activities that go down at the pavilion. This is putting you... Let me ask this, Brad. This is putting the ATM in front of where the restaurant is. It's in line roughly with the restaurant. A few feet off. We've got one inch. Basically, this is close to the operation middle of the major traffic area. People falling in and out. There are cars coming in and out. There are some concerns out there.
I guess, and I understand that in part sort of doable, we can try to accommodate if we're concerned. I think that once maybe starting to make a lot more sense, people would see this way as a... At the area right in the middle of everything, but I'm sure that we want to go to work with the answer company, make sure you can strike your lanes in such a way that that would make more sense. Right now, it seems, I think, to be in the middle simply because we do not have a... There's no lane traffic defined through that area.
Right. I understand. I just know I've been down there many, many occasions at the time when that pavilion's been heavily full, and parking down there right now is currently... Currently has been a nightmare because we have cars lined up on Route 3. My concern is that people are trying to use the ATM, people that are going to be walking in and out here, and cars parking. I don't know.
That was the reason...
I don't think that's a logical choice, but that's my opinion. That's all I can say, sorry.
The only reason people can walk up and use it, you don't have to turn. Yeah, that's another one, too, actually, with the traffic point. But what we tried to do was make it so the traffic could turn down in this area to turn around and exit, so that when there is a high level of traffic, people...
Actually, people are parking lots through that.
I think we need to define what your parking expectations are, because we're trying to fit around something that has never really been described to us. I asked Bob, boy, I think he says, "What is that going here?" And the process of trying to figure out how to put this parking lot together, to design the most efficient parking that can in this area, and try to put us in a position where we do nothing and compete that.
Should be easy.
I think we've done a fairly good job locating it there, but I'm open to any other ideas as to where you might locate it, as long as I can stay on city of full parking, because the state made it very clear that it's not easy to deal with.
I don't think we had any definitive plan yet as to the parking. I don't know where we were with that. So we just paved it this year, right?
Yeah, the only concerns I have is to make... Number one, obviously, the availability of parking to begin with down there, especially on a Saturday night, which I should have explained down there, which is a good way.
Excuse me, how many do you think spaces would that take up, Barry? I know they're not defined, but...
Well, we figured there was two parking spots. We're actually... Two parking spots would be committed to the ATM position. The last two on the head of it, where the capital of the place there would be taken by the ATM. I believe that that's because of the way the traffic flows with the ingress and ingress points here, that that is your parking. If you were to try to go beyond that and take more than those two spots over, start to park over here, I think you're starting to choke traffic.
No, well, currently, they do that because there isn't anything visibly marked over there.
That's what I was wondering, how they do it now.
Yeah, they just park lengthwise as many as they can fit without obstructing transit flow in front of the tourism center.
Can the people that are parked at the tourism center back out of there safely?
That's what I should mention, because that's the way they are. I had Bob make sure that normal parking lot travel and width.
Okay.
And that's what's accommodated here. I think reality is that this is what you should safely be expecting parking to be, minus two spots. That doesn't mean that people don't... That people park there.
Well, that's my problem for...
That we needed to find lines.
Sharon?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I guess, the biggest issue is that people coming in and out of there increase traffic, and potential problems with industrial traffic. I'm just looking up the...
Ask him what his timetable is. I don't know if he has to know you pretty quick.
In many ways, it's easier for us to locate in these areas here. The problem with accomplishing that is that that directs traffic adjacent to that pavilion. We've tried to devise a situation where we would not be directing traffic towards the pavilion except when people leave. That minimizes the impact of that. As you can see right here, there should be a fairly minimal impact on this traffic lane. But that was our goal coming to this end. Well, it's actually two goals. We had to come to this end for two reasons. One, we have to be high rough of parking lots because I can't let it flood.
Yeah.
And tell me this area down here is something flooding from...
Oh, never.
And I also had to make sure that we didn't direct traffic towards the pavilion. Empire is very concerned about anything that we present of this to the public. Certainly, that would be...
Well, I... You know, this would obviously have been a choice I could get over, over from I guess, but obviously, DOT is...
That is correct. They told us that. There is one thing you might be interested in knowing. They did make it clear that if you wanted to follow a procedure, the state has... They feel that this extra land, this extra right-of-way is surplus at this point. They suggested to us, even encouraged us, to place a bid and follow through on the surplus property law, but they also told us that would take at least two years. But it may be of interest to the whole planification to know that, because it could prove your part.
Kim, if we were to postpone this for a week till if the council's agreeable, next Tuesday, we could have maybe a special meeting on this to give Barry some time to look at it, for the council to review the contract again. It's kind of short notice to bring it up tonight. Is there a problem for you?
I... Well, I think it can create some issues. Perhaps I can suggest an alternative. Is it possible to look at this and pass this subject to a final review by Barry, such that I can then speak to some of our contractors, tell them we expect to move forward? Right now, I can't even mobilize anybody. I can't even... It's very difficult to go to the power company, for example, and ask them how they... how they, you know, where they're gonna give me a location to bring power off of unless I have an approved site plan from you folks. So I guess if we could approve this subject to his final review, at least I'd have something to take to them, as well as the contractors.
Well, I'm also, you know, I haven't read the contract in a while. I didn't realize this was gonna come up again tonight. There's two, two different contracts, the initial one and the one we received at a later date. I don't know if the council's looked at that recently, might wanna scrutinize that a little bit more, whatever. That's why I'm asking.
We can accomplish what you need to do, recognizing that we may not finish that this year. Our biggest concern is leaving an ATM on the west side when we move to the east side. And it's gonna be very difficult to accomplish that if we were approved to tonight, which I, actually, the mayor originally asked that we put this on the agenda two weeks from tonight, I believe, is the next scheduled meeting. And we kind of, I won't say pushed hard, but recognizing the deadlines and the timeframe, we asked that it be considered today. We appreciate anything that could be done to accommodate that, but we don't want, certainly don't want to...
Jim, how about the ATM that you have right now? I mean, that's certainly, you know, usable.
That's usable through November 17th. We have been told by Pioneer, we're out on the 17th, they won't renegotiate the lease.
So that's, end of the lease is November 17th.
And I'm out of the building season, so I mean, by then, I'll take it out of there and I'll have nothing in until sometime next spring.
Oh, you're gonna remove that?
That one has to come out. Pioneer, they will not allow us to stay there. I say Pioneer Pyramid, isn't it? I have to go back and look who it is.
What about the parking lot for the students?
The parking lot for the students? I'm not sure. I know what you meant.
Where you're at now.
Oh, you mean, what about the ATM there? That has to be removed.
What about the parking lot?
That would be up to the landlord there, we leased that facility. What they choose to do with it after we vacate on the 17th, the last day of our lease, I guess would be up to them. I'm not sure what they intend to do. We haven't been told, except that we have to be out.
I think he's asking if you talked to the landlord about putting a freestanding one in the parking lot, is what you mean?
Oh, yeah, we, we have done some conversations with them and have found that it's led us to moving to the east side of Fulton.
That sounds at all...
I guess, maybe, maybe I'm confused, Jim. The east side ATM, is that gonna stay?
Yes, we did a study of our business in Fulton a couple of years ago that led to this decision to invest a large sum in a branch that's going up down the street. One of the things they keyed in on was the need for three full-service ATMs in this Fulton market, and recommended that we have two on 481. So it makes sense for us to leave one in the northbound lane and one in the southbound lane. At the time, they wanted our second one to go in Canal View Mall, but until the parking lot was fixed, we couldn't figure that out. Maybe it's good that we're staying here. But this gives us what the, what they suggest we need, and I think it works pretty well.
I guess I feel, myself, anyway, a little uncomfortable with moving forward, and would ask the council, if it would be so detrimental to your plans, to give us till next Tuesday, if the council would agree, and then we could have a special meeting to review the contract in the interim, to give Barry a chance to look over the plans.
I don't, it's pretty plain right here, Joe, as to what's planned. The biggest concern I have, obviously, is the safety of the people that are using Bullhead Point. If this isn't planned out to protect their safety, obviously, I won't have a problem with that, but my personal problem is I wouldn't put it there. Obviously, it's a place of choice, and they're not allowed to do so. I mean, that's, that's all I can say. There isn't anything different that I'm gonna do to change that.
That means, I believe, if I'm reading you right, then you're in, you're in agreement that this is the best solution, knowing we can't go on either side of the street?
Well, I don't, my own personal, I don't like it, but that's, that's not gonna be up to me to decide. I don't like it very much because it's in the parking lot. There's, there's, there appears that there isn't.
Again, so I guess...
Other than the fact that, because DOT would allow them to place it, it would make sense to put it, but there really isn't any other choice I could put that in there.
It's council's pleasure. What do you want to do? I think we just, you just do it or don't do it, and we're gonna get in with it. Mayor, Ron?
Yes.
You know, these people, you know, I'm listening to a lot of things going on here. These people have been in this community a long time. They're trying to work with us, and we're kinda racking them over the calls. I, I don't see anything wrong with it. And if there's, if there's a problem, he's willing to iron it out with Barry. Let's get on with it, let them have it. I'm gonna make the motion to vote on it.
Well, I think, I think, I guess discussion, I think we're just being careful because we've had times when we've acted too quickly and then later decided that we probably shouldn't have acted so quickly without further information, or at least given some more thought to it.
It's gonna be a roll call, though.
But we, I mean, they've been working some of the...
No question, no question about it.
Try to get something over on the west side, and they're pretty hardy, and I think we should go with that.
Well, I, like I said, as long as we can protect the people over there, if that's all, my big concern is for the people, that's all. Make sure we can...
Would it help if we got that parking lot striped so people knew where we're going?
Definitely, make sure.
Is there any plans to do that this year at all?
I don't think so.
I mean, some limited striping, at least to guide them in and out of there.
I know there's been talk about it with the traffic department, but I don't think they have anything to do with that.
Okay. I'll talk to the mayor about it tomorrow. I mean...
It certainly would clear up a lot of congestion that's over there right now. You've been over there on the...
I know.
It's bad one.
Yeah.
We have things going on.
Yeah. Actually, I mean, for, for the safety of people over there, that brings up another concern other than this. Why in heck are we loading that place up if we have no direction clearly for them to drive when they're over there? I do not understand that. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. This project's been worked on, actually, for quite a while. This is not something that's just come up. Well, right now, we have a motion and a second to, to vote on this, and we have a resolution. So we'll go through with it, and I would like a roll call vote, please. Read the resolution.
This would authorize the mayor to sign a five-year contract with Empire Federal Credit Union to install an ATM service at Bullhead Point. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
I'm not against it from a standpoint of it's probably something we need over there, but I'm just hesitant as to whether it's, at this time, without looking into it a little further, whether it's a good idea to, I think Barry has some legitimate questions, and I don't think we're trying to prevent something from happening, or I think we're just being careful, and I think that's, so I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman Cavallaro?
I, I don't feel we're raking Empire over the coals. I've been in communication with Jim several times about this process, or this prog, program, and let's get it going, and I certainly wanna get it going. I just, too, wanted to be careful, not that I mistrust Jim, but we have gotten ourselves in a couple difficulties before because we didn't look into things a little more carefully.
No doubt.
So I apologize to the rest of the council, to Jim, but I'm gonna vote no. I asked for a week postponement.
Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Woodward?
Yes. And I would like to say, Barry, where do we got scheduled from here on over there? We got something there every week?
We're currently, currently, there's nothing planned over there.
Okay.
For the remainder of this year.
Okay.
Does change something?
Okay, well, I'll talk to the mayor tomorrow about getting that, that thing marked a little better because I, I can't, I can't see where it's safe operating without that thing in there, if that's, if you got people going whatever way they wanna go.
Where is it?
Okay. Thank you. The third thing in the discussion tonight, not familiar, is Meadowbrook. I know where Meadowbrook is, but I have no idea what this is about. Do you wanna explain this, Meadowbrook?
Yeah, I'll try. This is something that came to me a few months ago from their attorney about requests for some relief in the city, not, not relief, that's a bad word. This isn't like the change in the pilot agreement they asked for five years ago. This is a totally different thing. Really, I just wanted to get, bring it to your attention, get it on, out here, and essentially ask that you direct me to request that they come to the next meeting and explain it, because essentially what they're asking is that they have a $1.5 million loan that goes away pursuant to the way it was set up under federal law. After May of 1997, 10% of the principal disappears each year, as long as they have, I think it's 50% low-income occupancy, or something like that. But the interest is still around, and they're trying to refinance. And in order to make that work, they need us to agree to extend the interest payments another 35 years.
Ooh, have them come here. I'll chew them up like I did last time. That's exactly what they asked last time. That's exactly what they asked last time.